Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, any additions to this evening's agenda? Leading them, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the July 10th council meeting, also approval of minutes from the July 17th special council meeting, acceptance of library board minutes, approval of the July 14th payroll of $132,024.54, approval of the June finance report and claims in the amount of $4,539,522.40, of which, Mike, you'll explain, most of that money is actually Midwest One.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So, any questions regarding the consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes, but I'll abstain from the July 17th special meeting minutes.
Anderson?
Yes, but I too have to abstain from July 17th.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, move on to our public appearances. We have Steve Smith with us tonight with a request for use of parking lot at B Street. Steve?
Thank you. I don't know if this is necessary, but I thought I'd ask anyway. We have a bus trip going to Chicago September 9th, and we'd like the permission to park cars in the lots on B Street near the VFW and the Hideaway. Expect 18 to 22 cars. I talked to both businesses. Neither one has special events going on, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Do you want it reserved?
I don't know if I need it reserved. Again, better safe than sorry to ask.
Sure. You going to a Cardinals game or Cubs game?
Cubs game.
That's why I just only have 18 cars.
As long as you're going to a Cubs game, I move approval.
Move by Thompson to approve the request.
Second.
Based on team loyalty. Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same side? Okay. Thank you. And I think our clerk will record that properly. Yes, thank you. Can't guarantee.
I'll try.
Counsel, next we'll move to our resolutions and action items. The first is consideration of approval for the professional services agreement with Callahan Municipal Consultants. This is for the search for our new city administrator. We went over the basic parameters of this at our last meeting. This is the contract that you'll be approving. And I'll just call your attention to page five, which is essentially the timeline that we had discussed. The process would begin in early August and hopefully complete sometime in mid-October. And then page seven, where there, you'll see the scope of services, what they're going to be providing to the city in terms of finding candidates, interviewing them, preparing them for everyone's review here. And then finally, on page eight, the breakdown of fees that would total $10,950 for those So, are there any questions regarding the contract? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Ms. Counsel, we'll move to a public hearing on the Adams Street reconstruction project, and our city engineer Mel will give us a synopsis of the project, please.
All right. This project is on East Adams, the 600 and 700 block near South Maple. The project is going to start at South Maple, or is from South Maple, 450 feet. Right now, Bob Brown is replacing a portion of the sanitary sewer under this, under this street, so this area above the sanitary sewer will be repaired, as well as some additional feet. This, let's see, bids are necessary on this project because the engineer's estimate is $135,000. The bids are due at 11:00 a.m. on August 10th, with the work to be completed on or before November 22nd, which I think is the day before Thanksgiving, or a couple days before Thanksgiving. So, right in that timeframe, residents have all been sent a letter on this project. Guess if there's any questions, I'll try and answer those for you.
Do you know if residents on the street have alley accesses behind their houses?
None of them have.
None of them.
Alley access. I spoke with the Jackson County Supervisors, and they have allowed residents in that area to park at the Pathfinder's DHS lot with vehicles that they need to access on a regular basis. We have asked residents not to abuse it, and if it does become a problem, the staff of the building has been informed to let me know, and that we can work with the PD if it becomes a problem.
Okay. Any questions for Melanie at this time? Okay. This is also a public hearing. Is anyone who'd like to speak to the project at this time? Now, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and Counsel, you would be asked then to approve the plans and specifications and form of contract for the reconstruction project, and we'll be receiving bids later.
Move approval?
Moved by Thompson to approve plans, specifications.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Ms. Counsel, we'll move to consideration for a loan agreement, and Travis Squires with Piper Jaffrey is here with us this evening. Travis, welcome.
We have a packet of information, and I think for the time being, we're just looking at the step one. So, I'm just going to speak real quickly as to what your final loan will look like on the step one financing with the USDA. I know some of that is a little bit small, but I thought we'd review what you have outstanding as of today. You have two SRF loans, one from 2011 and 2012, both related to sewer plant improvements. Those will not be on the books for very long. Those will be rolled into kind of the new USDA structure for the plant. You have a ban, or what we call a bond anticipation note with Midwest One Bank that was entered into a little over a year ago. That matures next year. It's 2.1%. That was put in place for interim financing for step one. So, that's what's going to be converted. Originally, it was estimated to be about $160,000 annually. We are now to the point where we now have final details on what that loan structure will look like. So, the details on the step one financing are up there. Your par amount, or the amount of the borrowing, 4.28 million. It will be repaid over 40 years. You have monthly payments of $12,975, or annually, $155,700. So, your first payment will be September 10th of 2017. You'll close that loan, kind of so the swapping of paying off the Midwest One and encumbering the new loan on August 10th of, I guess, next month. So, we're looking at just a couple weeks. Somehow, August is already upon us. Good news here, interest rate will be at 2%, which was lower than the original estimate. I think all the prior documents had mentioned 2.125%, so an eighth of a percent lower. A couple of things on there. You've got a rate covenant at 1.2. You've got a reserve fund requirement that the USDA has for all of their debt. It's called, I'd call it more of a springing reserve. You don't fund it upfront, so you fund it out of surplus. You set aside 1/10 of the amount you're going to need over each of the 10 years. So, you'll need one year's payment on hand, which is $155,700. So, you'll set aside $15,570 each year to get to that reserve fund by year 10. That'll also be what you'll have on your other loans as well, and we'll get into that a little bit later. Are there any questions kind of on step one? Oh, I guess I should say I didn't put this as a note. You can prepay that debt, so at the end of the day, you've gone 10 years in, you've got surplus cash on hand, or you just want to adopt a structure that sets to pay that off more quickly, you can do so without any penalty. So, any questions on step one? The rest of my packet deals with kind of the later agenda item on the plant, so I don't want to confuse them, so I'll kind of step aside if you guys want to consider then your resolution that you have in front of you.
Okay. So, then, Counsel, the resolution will be for the payment of $4,282,000 in the sewer revenue capital loan notes.
Move approve.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Thank you, Travis. So, you'll basically visit with us again once we've reviewed some of the bid activity?
Yep. Correct. Mike, start that off.
Counsel, the next, we're going to hear from representatives of McClure Engineering, Alex Potter, and Mayor Terry Lutz, who is here this evening. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. So, tonight, I guess we're here to consider the bids for the wastewater treatment plant improvements project, bid package one, which is the treatment facility improvements component of the project, kind of the big kahuna. So, we bid the project on February 15th. It's now been over five months, but we're finally here at the point where I feel like we can consider the bids and hopefully make some motions on that. So, back during the bid on February, we received seven bids from contractors on bid package one. The low bid was PKG Contracting out of Fargo, North Dakota. The amount was 25, or excuse me, $21,546,900. The second low bid was Grid Ore Construction out of Buffalo, Minnesota, and their bid was $22,710,900. Williams Brothers was next. They're out of Peoria, Illinois. Their bid was $23,380,000. We received a bid from Foley Company out of Kansas City, Missouri. Their bid was $23,921,000. The fifth bid was Frank Millard and Company out of Burlington. Their bid was $24,595,000. We received a bid from Tricon Construction out of Cedar Rapids. Their bid was $24,620,000. And the last bid was from Carly Nelson and Company out of Burlington for $25 million even. We've been working pretty closely with PKG over the last several months, as we've tried to figure out the USDA financing situation, look for ways that we could potentially save money on the project through value engineering. They've been pretty receptive to that. They actually offered to extend their bid 90 days beyond the initial date, which has been helpful as we've worked through the USDA processes. So, at this point, I guess it's our recommendation that the council would move to award the contract to PKG for $21,546,000, and we would not award any of the alternates.
Thank you, Alex. Well, first of all, we want to thank all of the other contractors who did put together a bid for this project. We really appreciate it. There was a lot of interest in it, obviously, and, you know, we're happy to be considering the PKG award as the low award, as the low bid. Counsel, any questions regarding the bid itself? Okay. Mike, if you can give, bring us up to speed on what we'll actually be doing and approving this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. The first step is to actually designate a low, and then the second step is to award the contract to that low bidder. And if I may ask Travis Squires to address the counsel on his conversations with Cobank, our interim lender, and both, two things, twofold. One is sort of their requirements for the interim borrow, and then, second, their ability to match the extra funding that was given to us by USDA. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
These are never easy. I mean, the red tape and paperwork and procedures to follow. So, I believe the bid package went out to Cobank, and I think it was in December. It was either December or early January. So, you've had an interim lender in place since that time. It might have even been before then, because I remember coming to, I know it was winter. It was cold, because I came to a presentation here, and we kind of walked through your options, where you had a fixed rate bid and variable rate bids, et cetera. And Cobank was clearly ready to perform. They've done a lot of USDA loans, both in the state and out of the state, around the country. So, they'd committed on that original package, the $24.995 million, which was the amount that was originally your approval amount. Bids came in, I wouldn't say bids necessarily came in under, but the ability, or over, but the ability to kind of package your financing with your existing debt provided some additional flexibility. So, that's what the USDA has been working through. And then, obviously, you have national political situations that are outside of your control with budgets, and I guess we're thankful to the point already that we know that the USDA is ready to move and commit. But the nice piece about that is when you went back, you did get a grant awarded. So, with the USDA now, you do have a higher amount of borrowing, but you have, in this case, a grant and a lower cash contribution from the city required. So, really what that means is, you know, you can feel comfortable kind of awarding for the max amount. You're going to have a construction cycle here over the next two years, which is going to give you a good idea of where your cash balance is going to be within your sewer fund. So, at the end of the day, you might not actually even need to take out all of the full amount of USDA loan authority. No, it's not to say you can't, and then just turn around and pay it off right away. The thing I do caution you is, there's still one more project. So, you know, it might be that that next project, you're able to dump, you know, $2, $3, $4 million of cash towards upfront, whereas you have a really attractive financing with the USDA. Where they've committed right now, there's two separate loans. One is the original $24.995 million, which will be at 1.65% over 40 years. The second piece that they came in is at a 2% rate, and that's for $4,848,000, so 2%. And then, the grant for $914,000, the city's cash contribution for about 2.1 upfront. You know, as you kind of work through here, there's a lot of conservatism built into the models and stuff that we've worked on with city staff. I feel pretty comfortable you're going to end up with more cash than what you're going to see in your pro formas. So, I thought it would be probably a good time, I know we're maybe getting a little off topic, but to just kind of run through where we're going to be after the plant, and then we can talk step two if we want to. So, if you go into the second section, there's going to be a whole lot of numbers on this page. If we can go back, thank you. Oops, I went the wrong way. And once you're looking at, if you look at this left side, it's outlining your payment amounts, principal amounts, and then you see principal total, interest and administration, and then what says PNI, or principal and interest. So, that's really your total payments, and this is by fiscal year going down. So, you can see your 2011 and 2012 SRF loans go away. Your step one financing, then, is illustrated there at the 2% rate. The new debt under plant one and plant two, those are the estimated payment schedules right now, based on when we think the long-term financing will go into place. And then, you see step two as blank right now. You'll see another model that will show step two. Ultimately, when it's all said and done, step one, plant one and plant two, your payments are about 1.18 million per year. Right now, that you have plenty of revenues to cover those. I have a thing that says revenues available. That simply means, based on your fiscal '16 audited financial statements, if you took your revenues minus your operating expenditures, you would have 1.7 million approximately to service any debt and kind of other capital stuff that might come up. So, but non-operational stuff. So, you have a nice, healthy margin built in there. One thing you'll note is that, as we move further to the right, there's an illustration of a hypothetical situation of your rates, inflation, and then what I'll call a net-free cash flow. So, this is basically what money's left over after you make all your payments. And then, you can see, I am showing an allocation of building your reserve fund up, and then your cumulative unreserved cash, that's the amount that you could potentially put towards other projects or paying off your debt more quickly. Obviously, over the next 42 years, you're probably not going to accumulate $19 million. On paper, you can do that, but you're going to spend it on projects or absorb some of the inflation without doing extra increases. The five-year rate ordinance right now for the city sets into place rates of 5% increases over the next two years, so fiscal '18, fiscal '19, and then 1.75 for the next three years. That gets you through the position of where you have enough revenues on hand to complete all your projects. So, that was the rate structure that was designed. From there, you see there's a blue bar, and then rates and inflation going forward. I mean, we're just going to have to deal with that in five years. If you have an idea of where inflation is in five years, you're probably making a lot of good money in the stock market right now, because I don't think anybody really has a good target for what that's going to be. The thing to just keep in mind is that, you know, an easy practice on this is just trying to set rates to keep up with your inflation and your budget each year, as opposed to looking at, well, we need to make a big adjustment now because we're doing another plan. This allows you to accumulate some free cash flow and pay cash for your projects and not call people like me and Steve Nadel so that you have to borrow money. So, that would be ideal. Not that I'm trying to make myself out of a job, but, you know, that would be an ideal system for the city to start looking at accumulating some of that cash. Now, the only thing that changes, if you skip ahead two pages, and of course, I went through. Who told me where to go? I just can't follow. Not that anybody can read this, anyway, unless they got like a 90-inch plasma screen TV at home. All's I've done here is put a step two financing, estimated at $7 million, assuming you did the 40-year USDA structure again. So, this is where you can see, you know, based on your historical coverage amounts, you're at about 1.17. Now, fiscal '17 has looked like it was probably a little bit better than fiscal '16 in terms of performance, but that's approximately the rate structure you would need to get this step in place, because you've got to look back at your prior year's structure and make sure you have enough free cash flow. You can see, at the end of the day, your cumulative unreserved on this one is $9 million versus the '19. So, the approximate cost of paying for step two over 40 years is about $10 million difference. So, all that to say, all those words, all those numbers, is that I think where you're at right now in your rate structure looks good. Now, if you make, if step two is more expensive, that could cause issues, although, keep in mind that we do have that free cash flow on hand. It's probably a lot better to be maybe looking at a $5 million borrowing, spending $2 million of your cash towards the next project, as opposed to taking the full $5 million out. But you've accumulated this cash, you know, setting your rates ahead of time, so that you can apply these towards the project. So, one of these projects you can pick and dump a whole amount of cash towards it. So, it doesn't make sense to do it on the plant where you've got the most attractive financing right now. It might make sense when you get into step two. You don't know what that'll look like. There's a chance that you don't get USDA approval, where you might be looking then at an SRF financing that could be limited to 20 years, in which case, you're definitely going to want to put some of that cash towards, so that you don't have to look at an additional rate increase. The thing that I caution is that, based on these set of assumptions, you do not need additional rate increases over the next five years. If the project's higher, if you don't get USDA approval, we're going to have to revisit that. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to add another 10% increase, but one of those 1.75s you thought in the future might become a 5, just as an example of what that change could look like. So, to kind of circle back, and, you know, I haven't answered Mike's questions yet. So, you know, if we go back and think about what Cobank has done, as soon as we got the email that USDA gave you guys the thumbs up, it was time to start them working through their formal credit approval process. They'd already started. They, we've been in conversations with them over the last four months about the project budget. And once you got that final amount, they went and got credit approval. They received that last Friday at 5:00 p.m. So, they have approved the higher loan amount. The only thing that we're working with Cobank is that, one of the things that they've done on all of their loans is that they offer to provide the loan approval documents. It's a common practice for a bank. If you were to ask the bank for a loan, the bank would draft your documents based on their standards and hand them to you to approve. So, they've offered to do that. It streamlines their process. It's part of why they're able to be as aggressive and not charge upfront fees on their end of the financing, because they have a standard set of loan docs. We are in conversations now with whether or not your attorney and those set of loan docs will be approved ultimately, or if they'll want changes. It could go one of two ways, that you're using the Cobank documents with your attorney reviewing and suggesting changes, or it could be that it's your attorney and Cobank signing off on some suggested language that they would like included. Now, that that second option likely means some sort of cost upfront from the standpoint of, they need a legal counsel to review documents. That is completely expected on a $30 million financing, that they would have their counsel review either your counsel's documents, or you wouldn't want your counsel to review them. So, that's part of the transaction. Just know that it's not going to look any different than any of the fee amounts that we've talked about so far. So, if it is the purchasers' counsel transaction, within our fee, we had already planned to discount our fee from our max contract, we'll absorb that and likely end up paying for that purchasers' counsel fee. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. I don't have a firm, hard update. I think there is the potential that your counsel wants you to award this subject to getting the documents worked out. I think that's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, you don't close unless the documents are worked out, but I don't see anything that would stand in the way of one or two, or both of those options working. I've talked with the Cobank people. They're completely reasonable. Julia was in for a conference. Julia McCusker, who's their main contact at Cobank, has provided you all the information. She was in Des Moines for a conference from Colorado. She had six hours free one day. She drove down and visited with Mike and Joy. So, I mean, they're clearly committed to making this work, so I don't have any doubt we're going to get there. It's just that we can't tell you right now exactly what the documents will look like. Just know that your attorney will be either drafting them or have sign-off on the final legal documents. Long story short, Mike, did that kind of cover our conversation?
Well said, Travis. Well said. And we believe that that's all going to be settled and in place by our next council meeting, first council meeting in August, where all of these will be formally approved.
Yeah, I believe August 14th is the target. At the latest, it would be the next week, I think, would be the absolute latest, but I think we should be moving towards that.
Great. So, then, your recommendation would be to award this contingent upon agreement between...
On the contract side?
Right.
That was what came from Steve, right? Your bond attorney thought that it would be most prudent to award a contingent upon all the documents getting worked out.
Right.
I think the USDA will be fine with that.
Thank you, Travis. Well, we don't take lightly that, the good news, that the rate structure that, you know, we have proposed right now, which is these minimal increases going out, is something that will support the project going forward. So, that's great news. Really happy to hear that and happy to have that brought to our attention. Counsel, any questions regarding Travis's presentation? And again, our low bidder is PKG Contracting Incorporated Fargo, North Dakota, $21,546,900. Entertain a motion to designate the low bid.
So moved.
To PKG Construction. Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Counsel, our next would be to make the award for the construction contract for bid package one. Again, that would be to PKG Contracting. This will be, will have the contingency language that Travis just notified us of, and... This will be, will have the contingency language that Travis just notified us of, and we'll have a report for you likely at the next meeting that, where we are in terms of the finality of this, but we're going to go ahead and award the construction contract.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for your, for coming this evening, and we're really happy to be at this stage and really hopeful to get underway, and I know it's smiles all around. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, Counsel, we have consideration of a 28E agreement between the City of Fairfield and the school district, and I'm going to ask our Ways and Means Chair to give us the background in this, Tom.
Okay. The, Mr. Hallie and I, Ways and Means with Joy and Mike Carman, met with Dr., the superintendent, Dr. Knoll, and the business manager, Kim Sheets, from the community school district. The 28E agreement that we're proposing allows us to be able to utilize the services, in this case, of Jeff Kuntz. He has some skills, some designations that otherwise we have to pay, particularly is for the pool.
Correct. Park and Rec.
Park and Rec, that ends up costing us quite a bit of money because of the travel time and the other things there. It's a way that we can share some of these services, and I think there's an Exhibit C that's part of this, that says some of the things also that the school would like from us, particularly some space to store salt, right, ice and that for the, during the wintertime. There's a few other things there. But the thing does, it does not cost, from the city standpoint, there is no cost to us to do this. The school is still maintaining Mr. Kuntz's salary, but it does allow the school, I think, Dr. Knoll, you said there's like five additional students. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, from the school, the benefit that they get from this, from the sharing is they get credit for five additional students, which is tremendous.
Laurie, would you mind explaining how that, how that works? That's a, that's a great benefit that, obviously, we're happy to be a part of and to help with, but like to get an explanation on that. Thanks.
Sure. There are sharing agreements that school districts have that are available to them, usually more appropriately, I guess not appropriately, but common are between schools and schools. And in this case, as we reached out to neighboring schools, they did not need to have that services. However, I reached out to Mike because we can still, taxing bodies can have that same agreement.
Fantastic.
So, we get the benefit of five additional students.
Fantastic. Very good. Thank you. Any questions, Counsel?
No, I will say, though, the recommendation of the committee was that the council accept this.
To enter into the 28E agreement.
Yes.
Okay. Mike, any additional comments you'd make on this?
No, I would just add, well said on both parts, that our services in Exhibit C include the storage of sand and salt materials, tree removal from areas that do not require the specialized skills in arborists. In other words, for late terms, trees that we can cut down internally, snow removal from parking lots after the initial snow removal of the city's complete, limited civil engineering services, mechanical maintenance, repair motor vehicles, cold storage space as available, and potpourri repair as time is available.
Maybe future items to be added, too.
Absolutely. It's a win-win.
Where the needs lie.
And what are the services that Jeff is bringing to the pool that we're lacking right now?
Do you want me to take?
Yes, please.
Jeff is a certified plumber, and he's got his freon license, and so, we hire out all of our boiler repair work to a third-party contractor, and he's very knowledgeable in both preventative maintenance and maintenance of the boiler facilities. And so, both at the park and rec facility and at our library where we have boilers and chillers, he can stop by. He'll be, he'll provide eight hours a week services for us, so do those preventative maintenance checks and then repairs and other maintenance as he's qualified.
Very good. Thank you, Laurie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion to approve the 28E agreement between the City of Fairfield and the community school district.
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Passage unanimously.
It's sort of moot now, Mayor, but our city attorney did review this contract, and he's comfortable with it as it's written.
Okay. Thank you, John. Counsel, then, we'll just, we'll move down to committee reports. Ways and Means, anything other than that, Tom?
Yeah, we just talked about it.
Pretty much, yeah. Great. And then, we'll move to our project update from our city engineer.
All right. Not a lot to go over this evening, and it's hard to top what's already happened at the council meeting of awarding such a wonderful, get that project going. So, if there aren't any questions, I'll just give my annual work zone safety speech of, as construction moves along this summer, that people start to get tired of the road construction, especially last week when things were hot, we remind people to slow down and be careful of those contractors and city employees that will be out working on the construction sites. Last year in Iowa, there were 13 work zone-related deaths, and we hope that Fairfield is not one of those statistics. Our crews do a great job of, with their, wearing their safety vests and such like that, but please keep an eye out for both our crews and the contractors as the summer progresses. And next month, we should, we'll be starting on Walton Lake here within a couple weeks, and as well as the Adams reconstruction that you awarded, so we'll have more information at the next meeting. They have started draining. It is not finished. At least, I have not talked to Steve today. Mike?
I can speak to that. It's drawing down at about two and a half inches per day from the original mark. It's drawn down about 19 inches, and so, it's still got a ways to go yet.
Melanie, how did those public input meetings go with the Walton Lake, the people that lived out there?
There was one resident that came.
That was it?
I believe so.
Okay. Melanie, can you tell us the scope of the alley project that's going on across the street?
Yes. So, on the block across the street, the city crews are working on reconstructing using concrete. The east-west alley between Court and Main, and then the north half of the north-south alley between Burlington, and then the, and the mid-block. Right now, the crews have that completely shut down. Vehicles are asked to park, particularly employees and tenants of the building, they're asked to park in, I'm trying to think of my streets here, under the water tower. They're asked to park in that.
Big street.
Thank you. In that municipal lot, and they would be allowed to park there overnight because the alleys are closed, particularly for the tenants. It's, they poured last Friday in the heat, and they had worked on tearing up the concrete, but with tearing up the old work and then poured on Friday, and it appears to be going, going well, and we're excited to see how that project finishes up.
Great. Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Any other projects?
Melanie, do you know anything about the water main, or the break on Broadway yesterday afternoon that occurred?
Mike? I don't know anything particularly about that, but I guess, in a line with my work zone safety speeches, that the city, because of the dry weather and the dry soils, that's causing the water mains to shift, causing a lot of water main breaks. The city has, they have just seen probably two a week or more.
Today, currently, they were breaking faster this weekend than we can repair them.
Really?
On Broadway, our crews are out there. If you remember Saturday, the heat, they were out there from 5:30 in the morning until 6 o'clock at night to get that one finished. So, it has just been a tremendous season for water main breaks.
Yeah.
So, just create some awareness out there. We need some rain. We need a slow rain, prolonged rain, soak some water up so we can stop this drain.
It just was a lake.
Change that adjective to horrendous.
Horrendous.
Slow. Slow. Yeah.
And I did speak with the street departments regarding that. Most of those breaks, they are going to be just surfacing with gravel, and then, once the alley project, as well as Walton Dam project is done, then they'll come back and do those patches. But right now, they've got some other larger capital improvement projects that are on their list before they start patching. So, give our, give our guys a break.
Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it. As a Counsel, that brings us to our, the end of our agenda in session. We do have an issue to discuss some pending litigation in closed session, so at this time, I'd ask to have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton.